Are we rolling, Jonathan?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the monthly city council meeting for the City of Nisswa. It is 7:06 PM. Would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the President of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands.
So, we do have an amended agenda this evening. Under report information for the council, and then under new business, there are items 10 and 11, lift station number three improvements, halt stand. That being said, are there any -- we will move on to the consent or clarifications with that.
I vote the consent calendar is presented.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next on the agenda this evening is open forum. Is there anyone in the public? We will close the open forum and move on to reports. Jenny, would you like to give us a report?
I would. I apologize, first of all, for the projector. The light bulb just went out during our audit presentation, so that's what to follow along, and we will do our best to make sure everyone knows kind of where we're at with each item. Just I wanted to provide the council with an update as far as what we have done as staff departments to react and also be proactive with the council's information. And basically, just outline each department and what steps they have taken at to address any necessary staffing, scheduling changes, going jurisdictions, kind of working together to ensure that we're all doing things that makes sense and that are in the best interest of the public, our community, and of course, our city. Changing, as you know, by the day and working through really unusual circumstances and things that we -- I'm happy to go through this if you would like, but I wanted to just provide that information. Closed all of the on-sale restaurant establishments. We did make that adjustment as necessary, but we have kept open the on-sale portion. And we -- I'm staff, and we have one part-time staff who earns benefits, and so we are able to -- they are also keeping very busy doing some cleaning and some other projects that were on a list to get -- not quite sure how long this will go, but we'll just take it as a, you know, every week to two-week basis and adjust from there. As far as spirits of Nisswa, that's been, as far as having frequent conversations with Brian Farrell, they have been very busy at the store. More exchanges between the staff and the customers, you know, when you're, you know, taking money, giving change, or picking up the same bottles and things like that. So, we've been -- Brian's been great about minimizing staff, but everybody seems very comfortable at this time, and so we're just going to take it, you know, and change things as we need. We also talked about providing pickup so they can be quick to pay, and then they can leave and not, you know, minimize other contact with other work on. Today, however, this morning when I got here, I really am struggling with the, you know, potential and trying to be, you know, a part of the solution, and so I came to council to close city hall to the public for two weeks. I feel that would be appropriate. I'm hopeful that that really is just a two-week period, and then we can, we can open, be able to provide services at still a high level via email and provide services, just trying to, just trying to be thoughtful to the staff and, you know, things if necessary, but I don't think that's necessarily at this point. So, we do that. Any thoughts? Questions?
How much, just day-in, day-out, on the average, how much foot traffic you get through the door? I know it's probably hard to put a number on, but is it?
Most residents and people around the community are just trying to be thoughtful about that themselves. This past week, you know, six to 10 people in the building on a given day, so it hasn't been a ton, certainly not overwhelming.
I did a quick read tonight when I came in and saw your memo there. There's three things jumped out at me that are not in the memo.
Okay.
How do you intend to handle the public meetings zoning?
For the, for public works, what?
Committee.
The committee, okay. I left myself a sticky note, and I still forgot to mention that when I was going through the information. So, I have seen it with Anne Matthew Hill, our parks director. All three of them have said that there is nothing, those meetings, for those departments, just to avoid having unnecessary meetings. So, that was conversations we've had, and there's our understanding. Council meeting goes, that's a little bit of a ways out, so we'll have to determine at that point if we need to figure out a piece of it. Planning and zoning, public works council, I said, so that's my response.
So, those three are on until, if they're not?
Up until May, and we will notice that as appropriate.
Before the planning and zoning?
Before the planning commission? So, I believe we're already into, based on our schedule, we're already into the May meeting. As far as if somebody brings something in, they're not making the April meeting mark that we have right now, and planning and zoning is related to the North Pines development with Grandview. And I have been working with Mark Roni on trying to answer some of the questions that came about from the list. Let's work through those questions and get things a little more clear before we continue back.
Need to be done.
Right. So, I don't foresee the need to have committee meetings, really any other city meetings, until the next council meeting, and then we, and that, which is April 15.
I think it all is reasonable accommodation hassle for us to do the same or follow suit.
So, much stuff can be done electronically and all now.
Would be answering the phone calls that could end daily.
Staff?
Yes.
Publics, huh?
Correct, yes, yes.
I'm okay with it.
No concerns? Okay.
Immediately tomorrow?
Yes.
Two weeks from that point on?
Right. Two weeks, basically, is Friday, so then I just pushed it to Monday to say, let's just do that.
Yep.
Okay.
The only thing, I go along with it on a temporary basis, but in the short, short time from now, what are we going to do if that happens? What do we do in the late summer? What do we do in the fall and in the winter?
Well, I think what we would, what we would make decisions based on how things are changing.
Be good to take a look ahead.
Doing my best to keep up with options, decisions, and then what, you know, impacts those have to staff, to city services, and all of that, so certainly.
But after two weeks, depending on that, we take a hard look at where things are at in the city hall opening up again.
Yep.
And a lot of things to be done for me to do.
Yep. Our goal is certainly to --
Get a sign, some signage made up for the front door that not only says it's closed, but give them list out every way they can get it. That would be extremely important.
We will do that, certainly.
And website.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We have a Facebook page, too, don't we?
We do, yeah. Share it out there, yeah. We'll provide it to the chamber as well, because they'll distribute that.
City attorney's report? Do you have anything for us? Mr. Pearson?
I'm following that task. This is a conversation on our council meeting, self-control.
Okay. Counsel.
Yeah, look at the calendar, so you get the dates.
Movement, we close the city hall from effective --
The 19th.
The March 19th through April 3rd, and reassess.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, I didn't, sorry. I wasn't paying attention.
It's okay. There's still majority.
Move to cancel committee meetings as well? Move to cancel.
Discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anything else? I will be in the audience tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Just spot right there. Okay, next, on your wastewater treatment facility, right now, the city has your permit in for modifications, so the MPCA has submitted that for 30-day public comment period that ends April 1st. And right now, I just emailed the staff, they had a couple simple typos in there we're not even addressing. Correcting the permit that we, that they have off for public comment as far as just general description of your proposed project. So, Steve Stark, the state hydrologist, a couple times on items, questions they've had on the permit, and also locations of new monitoring wells. Also, the bridge 2613, the bridge on Hazar, actually received a negative declaration from the Corps of Engineers regarding the stream modifications and stuff, so that's good. He has their applico, he's been working with Maggie, and they have that application in with the fee. And also, you know, our plans are in at the state, and I actually sent Brett Stark, the state aid engineer, an update on, and the construction costs. And then, you know, staff has been asked to keep, obtain some easements. With the state bridge bonding fund essentially as a city, if you're awarded that, similar engineering and administration costs. So, I just, you know, we're all tracking to make sure we get all costs included, so that's, you know, I just provided the state an update of cost-to-date, and also then, you know, we'll construct later this fall. All right, so that's the three things I guess, yep, I had written down here for you this evening. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Next is new business. First is update from the highway, county highway.
I was going to refrain from using the microphone, but, but I've heard it's all good, it's clean, so should be good to go. I just wanted to come by tonight and to next phase of up in your packet that kind of separates all the 13 projects. There's a lot going on on 13, so reconstruction, it would be between trunk highway 371 and county road 137. I don't know if your maps are colored, but the map, it's a blue section on that map. The plan there, that's our latest plan, and that's something you can review or take a look at. Packet. I just wanted to say that we've had a couple of public meetings as well. We've provided this design for the public, we got a lot of good feedback. We've used a lot of that information to the right-of-way portion of the project, and we're kind of looking for municipal consent within the next month, is what my goal would be. So, what I wanted to do is just talk a little bit about the -- there's a, I guess I don't have the deal in front of me, so it's hard to do without the --
Thank you.
Sorry about that. One of the reasons that come right off the bat was because of the crash, the crash history it had. I provided you a crash map. But anyway, you can see over like a 20-year period, we've had about 70 crashes, and just over 40% of them were bodily injury or fatality. It ranks in the bottom 5% of all of our county roads as far as pavement condition, and it, it's a stated road that has never been built to any kind of safety standards, and so that's probably the things that leads to those crashes. So, before we set up these, these public goals, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but there's a few of the project goals that really jump out to me, and we tried to emphasize to the motorists and to people using, people living on the road, and also people for, we didn't want to go in and open it all up 100-foot right-of-way and impact all of those homes. So, we use those public meetings to show this design and, you know, change our design from the -- you can see that we had two different types of typical sections on this project in certain areas to minimize property impacts. That allows us to go down to a 66-foot right-of-way, and allow us to drain water under the roadway with the storm sewer. Red, which would be the area around Lake Hubert and Clark Lake, using that urban, that suburban design with curb and gutter. Areas in green would be a rural. I put this picture under benefits of curb and gutter. This was a job I designed a few years ago, designed that suburban design with curb and gutter. You can see how it, it lets us have that wide, safe republic to see. Some of the other benefits it, it had was we were able to reduce the tree clearing by six and a half acres, and also we were able to acquire 50% flexible design.
Have any feel for, on the different, the kind, and, and purchasing more right-of-way? Is it, I would imagine it may be more expensive, but do you have any just calculation?
Give you a calculation off my head, I would, I'll tell you that it's significantly more expensive to build a curb and gutter section, which would be in the millions to build this project just for right-of-way, because of all those homes that are just so close to the roadway. On the other side of the road, it's all lake property, so definitely using this section is a lot.
Appreciate that.
Some of the other pictures I have in here, I just wanted to kind of show you some of the challenges we've been through with designing this project, and you have a plan, if you, in the new design that you'll see there, using the curb and gutter, we'll be able to pond that water directly infiltrating right into the lake. It'll be pretreated. We got, we're going to have to be homes that are really close to the lake, or to the road, excuse me. We've, we've done things like, and we've actually moved the alignment in areas to try to move away from some of those homes. We've done that to the Paul Bunyan Trail as well. We're providing pedestrian, you know, disability accesses there, so that's a positive. A lot of utility poles, we're working with them to, and I believe that's their plan at this time. I don't want to say it's ugly-looking, but it, but it's, it's kind of an eyesore. Last two years, we've been, we just completed the, the environmental work on this project. It took about two years to get through the historical review, and there were some archaeological sites along the route that we had to design around. The next steps to this project in particular would be to get the right-of-way plot approved. The, the design is complete at this time, it just needs to be approved by the county board. We're expecting that to be till four municipal consent, potentially at the next meeting, after you reviewed some of the information. And we'll start working with property owners individually, starting April 1st, who need to purchase right-of-way from. I can tell you that I've met with over half of the people along this road, and the overall response is, is fairly positive, so. You, I think you're at one of them.
Could've been.
It's been a year and a half ago, but this fall, we did.
Sure.
So, with that, I just ask if there's any questions about this project in particular?
On the 2020?
We're actually going to go farther north around that pond to get away from the lake, but then those curves will be much bigger curves, and they'll meet safety standards.
Okay. That's just noted.
Wasn't intended that way. When we came through and cleared for the road, the state decided to clear that state, it's like a giant field up in that area. The road won't be that big, but the clearing looks, looks huge.
And all this stuff with the new county cost-sharing is on the county's book dime?
Yes, so, and at the, at the time of the public meetings, I was telling them, the only possible assessment would be from the city's cost share. Obviously, now the cost share changed, there's zero cost share to the city to make them aware that there should be no assessments on this job. So, I'll get that out here.
I actually don't have any questions myself.
Tom does.
Just one quick one. See, for camp, is there a plan? Is that going to be moved out?
It will be, yeah. So, we'll have to talk about moving that to another location.
Oh, right, okay.
Yep. Your plan for 2024?
2024, okay, thank you.
No, I think overall, I think everybody would probably quite appreciate having to open up the right-of-way and then those areas where, so, yeah, when you get in around the homes.
Right.
Homes that are super close.
Yep. I agree with you. I think there is an appreciation for that as well, so.
So, on the, I guess I do have one question. On the south side of 13, side of the road, or is that with, like tree line to tree line, is that adequate as it is?
Are you thinking from, like in the Grandview property area up to?
Say from the church.
The church to Camp Lincoln Road will get widened out to 100-foot court, so that's through there with ditches, similar to what it looks like now, just wider. Once you get to Camp Lincoln Road, that's where it's going to narrow down, and this, it's, there's roughly 66 feet of right-of-way out there right now, except we're going to clean up a little bit on the edges of those pine trees. Then, if you know where crab tree is, as well.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that helps me.
Yep.
include the picture.
Stuff has not been affected yet. We have no idea how things are going to go, but I saw they're all putting temples up today, so I think things are moving forward. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item E2 approved, 2019 City of Nisswa Audit of Financial.
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E3, recommendation from the Nisswa LLC, parcel one, PID 28110527, rezoned from hunt. And we will do these individually, I suspect.
The parcel one for the rezoning, and authorize the city clerk to?
Coming from the planning and zoning commission, was it unanimous?
No. We had, we had a short, there were only three out of the five members who could attend, was two to one.
Okay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move a parcel two, rezoned from Shoreline Residential to Commercial Waterfront, and authorize the city clerk to probably say summary ordinance.
Second.
Second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? That motion carries. Item E4, recommendation, Parks and Rec. Do you have any, anybody have anything that they want? I'm not suggesting that there's need of anything, I'm just asking.
The recommendation from the Park and Rec Advisory Committee?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item E4, resolution supporting application for regional trail program funding.
Supporting the application?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hoff. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item E6, approve 2020 City of Nisswa fire department.
Two.
Jenny, do you have any?
If you wouldn't mind doing it in two motions, let's do the budget first and then the contracts. Thank you.
Okay, I'd move the approval of the budget.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Budget is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the fire contracts as presented from the City of Lakeshore, Lake Edward Township, and the City of Peakawatt Lakes as presented.
Second.
Second by Hoff. Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Approve 2020 agreement for professional services between the City of Nisswa and Brenner Lakes Area Economic Development Corp.
This is an annual thing, right?
This is an annual thing, and this amount was included in our 2020 budget.
Question? Has, has, have the approaches with anything over the last, done any, anything for us? I know generally speaking, it's to encourage development.
You know that Bladech works with, regularly works with private lenders for businesses in our community, so we're not, a new business comes to town, banks work with them to help them with some financial assistance need. They, the other piece of that done is that thing as well to potentially look at, to, you know, engage from our side as well, because they're always available, and, and we do touch base once or twice a year, and certainly, they are always willing to come present or, or share about what they've been working on, so not directly with the city.
So, when the time comes for the, the big Walmart store in Nisswa, they'll be there to help us, right?
Can be like what Jenny was just saying, there can be things that we just wouldn't see. They're a bit, as low-interest loans, or as down payment assistance, or different things, almost like a small business administration loan, but, yeah, we just, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know.
Okay.
I know they're very active, and, you know, they do, you know, they do kind of feel a little bit like those gap areas, you know? And usually, what, what happens is the lending institution, actually, they usually advise the client to contact Bladech and see if they can participate and help in making something happen, so. So, I lost track, did we do a motion or?
I don't think so. I'll, I'll move to approve the 2020s between Nisswa and Bladech.
Second.
Second by Hoff. Any discussion on the motion? That motion carries. Item E8, approve road maintenance agreement between the City of Nisswa and Lake Edward Township. I do have a question on that, regarding we clarify, just kind of clarified that, or set a little clearer expectation?
So, what we have, Tom Blommer and I did attend a township meeting, just to engage them directly and ensure that if there were any concern, that we had that opportunity to, to discuss. The township didn't feel at this time about snow plowing specifically, or other road maintenance items. They had requested that with them upon approval, so I did, I presented it here. It is as back from the resident who did reach out to us. I did send a file correspondence, and I, and I didn't get any feedback from them, certainly asking for, for your thoughts and feedback.
Well, I would really like to see the city engage in Lake Edward Township about, or switching back, or they take the, whatever they will call it, road, or go back to Clark Lake Road. Citizen is, you know, has not, I just assume that the city's going to do what the city should do, which is ensure for them that their road is for safety and health concerns. And, or somebody screaming at us to move forward. That's my, for those, I don't know, if you guys know much about it, but the city plow, the city has about half of that road, or a third of it, and Lake Edward Township has maybe two-thirds of it. And we're not getting plowed out in any timely fashion, and Lake Edward Township has one plow with as much more road than we have. And if they need, there was a need for, you know, ambulance, or fire, or something, or for them to get out to go to a doctor's, they're like, this was 10 years ago, or some years back. There was an agreement where Nisswa would do, I didn't know what to call it, it goes north off of 18, and Lake Edward, and I actually might correct on that, Lake Edward Township, it's our line, so. We follow where the turn is. Sure. But as far as reporting, so, probably, we want to, and they also have thirty vehicles that, and, and they, they need water, so I, I would ask that, we, we, we wrong. My people, they want us to hold this, and I don't, I would, I would, if they haven't been approached, they can't, I would, I would, that would change the view.
And Tom, didn't we offer to, if they needed support, because they only have one driver, they only have one at the beginning of this year, where it was just extreme? I mean, you know, come to some kind of agreement, that option?
Correcting, I thought that, it seemed, you didn't feel there was any problem with their, with, with, yeah, and that's kind of, I think, where the problem lies, is they're a little lax compared to other communities. And good for them.
Are you saying you don't think we should agree to this?
I, I would like, I, I just really feel like, by, by the City of Nisswa, it's kind of interesting, it's kind of interesting that on Middle Column Road, the Nisswa residents don't, wouldn't. don't, wouldn't, would be upset if Lake Edward did it, and probably for the same reason that the residents on, on East Clark Lake Road feel the same way, you know, the service, compared, now, maybe to their standards, it's okay, but compared, but compared to Nisswa standards.
Hearing it sounds as though they don't want to make any change.
Well, they, you know, they may not want to swap, they may, they may not want to swap, but we could say that we're going to take care of you in the city of Nisswa.
The, the only wrinkle I'll just throw into that, is that the, the road, are we plowing half the road?
Here's my take, and I'm just going to be blunt, why in the hell don't we do our job for our citizens the way we should?
And that's what I'm saying.
Sure. I mean, it's a short stretch, it's probably 10 minutes of time to do it. There is, there is a turnaround rate where we end and it goes into the end, like, the road.
So you're, you're, you're suggesting that we keep what we're doing with Middle Cullen?
Or, or?
Is it realistically that much more for us?
It isn't, my only concern would be setting a precedent, and we have these kind of agreements with Pecowat Lakes, you know, anytime somebody doesn't like the job of plowing of one of those other, there are a line there.
Sure.
I, you know, I don't know, I.
I tend to agree with Tom in that regard, just again, with the Cullen people.
I don't think you guys are understanding the issue at all. We are here to take, take care of our people, and we're not doing that. There are safety issues there, and we need to take care of our citizens.
Somebody else is plowing, and something happens, who's legally responsible, are we responsible? I think we need some sort of a contract to say both, what would you change?
We would take back our stretch, and we would plow it ourselves.
Yeah, but it's not ours.
It's 50% our stretch.
Right, but then the Middle Cullen is.
It's in, where it floods Nisswa. So we, we need to provide services for our people.
Well, I understand that, and I, I don't disagree with that, but I think unless we want to do it outside of our boundaries, then we need a new document.
Right. It's not going to go over well with them, because they don't like to hear that they're not doing an adequate job of plowing.
I would no need with that.
I, I think you should, I, I really do, because Jenny and I did, and it wasn't a, you know.
It doesn't matter, you just tell them.
Well, I think it does matter, they have an opinion too, and.
Our people, then we just need to inform them, that we'll take back that, we're going to do that section. Is this thing like?
George.
Huh? Or George, I'm sorry, George, yeah. Don't go mean.
I think you should go to one of their meetings, and suggest it.
That's fine, I really don't care what the reaction is on me, go get the job done, that's what it's about.
Point doesn't have to be right now, the question to Tom, as far as the maintenance of somebody else's, their road, so, okay.
Can I, can I move to table this to the next?
Yes.
Next scheduled council meeting, whatever that may be.
Item E9.
Do we need a second for tabling?
Personnel updates.
I'll move to approve the.
Question, if, if we're not serving and cutting back and doing things.
Um, the current virus situation, that's a great question, this position will be fully reimbursed by Sourcewell regardless, but if there be a situation where we felt we weren't, let's say we weren't going to have any parks programming or anything all summer, and that.
We're not liable at that point?
Correct, so, we will, we will make sure to keep an eye on that, and let you know if anything changes.
Yes, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you mind taking this one?
Will do. The city of Nisswa, you know, you publicly advertised the lift station three project, uh, you know, for, that is correct, yep, thank mayor, at the, at intersection, you're, lift station number three, you are reconstructing it, Grandview has provided the city with a 50 by 100 foot easement. Let's say, the contractors that had the bid documents out, and had been calling us quite a bit the week before, but now you say, on, yesterday, R and R Excavating in Hutchinson, Minnesota, did submit a $1,870, as a note, that was, you know, considerably over the estimate of $350,000, that was based, actually March of 2019, when the city of East Call Generator, they received seven bids, that ranged from 285 up to about 440.
Table, a primary issue, do you feel, I mean, the low water table, is that a concern, or is it just that it's that busy out there? What, what's your take on why we've received?
All right, good, water table, no, I mean, you know, East Call Lake, we were actually about 15 feet from the water table, the schedule, just, you know, the substantial completion was June 12th, because we wanted it to be done before the 4th of July, and we gave ourselves about a week, we knew if we didn't finish till like the 19th, contractor stretch, the, what, you know, the calls, what, you know, was, many contractors felt there was just too much to that schedule, and they didn't want to stick their performance, you know, bonds, you know, they didn't want to have a project, we don't want to run the risk of, uh, you know, not being able to meet the schedule, and, you know, having a large mess the week of July 4th in the middle of Grandview.
So you had to kind of report on that, would we, would we want to send out, is there a reason why we have to, have to do it this spring?
All right, date, you know, look at, you know, rebidding the project, and absolutely, Tom and I talked about this, it's the next item on your agenda, yes, one, just given, you know, also City East Call Lake did the same thing last year, they actually bid it so that the project wasn't going to be done during, so, like you say, if you, well, I'll say, if you bid the project, you know, authorize at your April meeting, let things settle down here over the next month, then authorize bid it, so you have bids at your May meeting, much better bids than you, than you award, and you have, then they, they have plenty of time to get their pumps, and get it in their schedule. But I'll just say, you know, like David Baker with Kiechel, who was calling me with several questions, one of the seven, but I'm just offering that. And actually, you're all familiar with Tom's backlog service, he actually called me from Nebraska this morning, asking if the city, and I said, Tom, I don't, I'll, I'll inform you to bid at this time, because I would be looking for fall work also, but at this time, I'm down working in the state of Nebraska, so just, that's a side call that I got at 8:30 this morning. So, but yeah, so that, that is your, that's a bid, if you want to try to do it. I'll say, you know, the reason you were looking at this, is last year during, during it, staff put in a new pump that does 210, it's the biggest, that control panel happened, last July 4th, two to 22 and a half hours a day. Typically, you like your lift station pumps to run more like six to eight hours, but it just shows you how, you know, that's why we, this project was, when we increased in the cross section of the station, also we were going capacity versus 210 gallon per minute capacity, to get that runtime down under 12 hours per day.
What is, would you say comes from the resort, and how much comes from the, all other areas, that drain that come into that?
That, it's going to be around a 50/50, all, all the way around Holman Bay, and that gets pumped up, and there's a force main that actually pumps right into existing on Station 3, and then you collect, you know, all residences along West London and East London. So, I would say, well, commercial properties, those that are rented down in Holman Bay, so I mean, you know, they're, I won't say the hotels, but those 21 cottage units, they, they produce some, when I, you know, hindsight's 2020, it would have been nice if the city would have had, had a meter on those, but there's.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we reject the bid from R and R Excavating of Hutchinson, Minnesota, in the amount of 706 hours, for a, what do we call this?
By Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, do you, do you want a motion to authorize at a later date?
Mark, you just.
Well, you, you can do that, I'd better actually wait here, you know, to your, your April, I mean, you'll have an April council meeting in some form or, you know, from, from the standpoint of, like you say, you could wait until that time.
Okay.
That's actually a question, too, we probably should at least inquire on that, and talk to them about that, asking the city to make a, you know, a resolution to go out to bid again, because with that resolution, so.
There's probably almost no hope of getting this done by 4th of July, even if you were willing to spend the $700,000.
With everything that's going on?
Um, the equipment supplier, but most of the contractors are, that's why we didn't have more bidder, or one of the main reasons we didn't have bidders to.
Consider this, we would probably be getting right till the end of June, by the time our pump showed.
I spoke to him, it could be a few months before things get back to normal, and these pump, I thought he said 10 to 16 week lead time on them, so, under normal condition.
If we so desire, we could say we are in for fall work, and if there's, we need to get the pump, we're going to figure out a time where we could ensure that a pump would be here by said date in the fall, and maybe over the next few weeks, you and Tom can work on timeframe length, length work for them, and then come back with them, maybe we should get the pump order. To those questions, and then we will take it up to them, and, and move forward with it. Does that sound reasonable, or is that?
Yes, well, that's partly, my, let's say, yes, we will be coming back at your April meeting, probably with a request, because then if you award in May, 18 weeks is a very typical time, even if that would go to 16 weeks, well, then we're taking all of, opposed for Grandview to do this project until after Labor Day weekend. It is, as far as the length of a project, it's, it's about a two week long project, so it's, you know, so whether you, third week in September, but just picking a time, I would not recommend you start at, you know, October 30th, uh, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is our Band-Aid though?
Installed in there last year, that got us to the 210 that Mark was referring to, so that way we would have a redundancy there, you know, some chance of not having any problems down there during July.
Through the summer.
Yeah.
How much are they?
It's 16,000. I, I think I provided the number.
Yes.
And would that be the sort of thing that we would, how far away does that pump like that come from, Tom, Minneapolis, or, I might take it, it's probably not close enough to where a pump went out, you could just go get it, so.
Sells, then it goes over to, I think they come out of Austria or someplace like that, and it's.
Sure.
Many weeks.
So, so we'd like to have, if we don't need it, is it, there'd be a way to use it or sell it?
It would have a residual, I said it would have a residual.
Keep it for?
We can either maybe reuse it in one of our other lift stations if it fits, or pump, pump supply.
So are you, are you thinking that you'd get a pump and you'd put it in, or you would just have?
Yeah, but for it, for one, but the other thing is, is a lot of times they'll want, both pumps will kick on together to handle the flow, well, I'd feel better having a 200, another 210 gallon pump, probably higher than last year, so what was 22 this year, there'll probably be a time where it couldn't keep up, and those two pumps would have to come on together, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize for $16,578, and this for.
I'll second, so we can have this discussion.
I was just going to ask, do we have where the funds are coming?
This wasn't really a planned purchase, but it is for events like this.
And it's, we have more than enough to cover it, I'd just say?
Yes.
Hearing done, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Based on your decision, I will notify the R and R Excavating of the council's decision, and return their bid.
All of them, the chance to bid again for a later date?
Well, yes, I mean, yeah, there, there was nothing here that would, you know.
People, whatever, yeah, whoever. So a question that I have, are we, are we having any discussions about participating in any of these costs that are kind of above and beyond, that they are, of what they're, the use they're putting on our system, causing a lot of costs? And so that's a question, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a fair and reasonable discussion to have, aside from whether to act on.
I think they're paying all their appropriate hookup fees and utility fees.
If we had thought about it, metered it maybe better, then we might have something they can go to, but lacking that, you're right, they paid down the fees that they, we asked them to.
It's kind of a, kind of, not to go back at what you said earlier, but we, we provide a service, our services to maintain the facility, and that was, that was come out of all the fees that we've collected through.
You know, I don't think 20 years ago, Grandview said, hey, I think we're going to like double or triple the size of our resort, maybe you should think about the bigger pumps and pipes in. I do think, Josh, it would be, you know, when you, when you, Aggie, really impacting the system, and the, that's, that runs through the question.
Yeah.
Now, whether we want to do anything about it or not, that's to be decided.
Well, I think in the, based, you know, on the, however, next 20 years or whatever we're looking at, and one of those things is getting a bigger force main, coming out of pump, lift station three, up to there, and just to find the overall impact of everything that's going on.
Well, just to understand too, when they hooked it, so, that's not their usage, their quarterly usage either, that's just to connect.
Yeah.
We are in discussions with Grand, we've done a lot of work between Tom, Aggie, and myself to these, and working through which ones should now be metered, because things have changed, and with these buildings that have a lot of use, and so we are, we submitted that information to Mark Roni, and I just reminded him on Monday that, I'm looking for fees, I'm not looking to receive any, you know, back fees or anything like that, but, you know, going for, so we are working through that, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll get to some kind of resolution sometime.
Of these seven, you know, Grandview realizes the impact that they're making on those, and they're like, hey, we know we're going to have to pony up some money, you know, I mean, they're, they're putting a, it's not, it's not about moving, reading lines that they use, and pumps that, that are huge, I mean, there you, so, one thing I would point out, the location that the new lift station is going, I don't believe Grandview charged us for that, so that don't. Starting proposed liquor law changes in grocery stores, do you have a horse?
I apologize, I don't have a lot with our recent change, but I will say that our liquor managers did attend a legislative conference, prior to every set of Josh, Josh Heinzman was really appreciative for the information that Earl was able to provide him, Brian and I are going to work together to put some quints in doing that for you, but also to provide to him as well, because he was very supportive of position on this, and just wants some talking points, and some ways to be able to then communicate that information, so, with our recent events, that just, these two items just didn't quite get there, so.
Is there any, last time I talked with Ja, the state government, that he is, that's part of his.
Committee assignment type thing, yeah.
So what is, is there anything, is it still, at that time, it's, is that, is there anything changed there?
Because it's a bonding bill year, there is not a real active push for this, for this bill right in coming next year again, and I think it's still just being generally kept somewhat, it'll come up again.
You know, when I talk to him, he's like, I know how you feel, I know how you feel, I know how you feel.
Yes.
And I know Brian had the same thing, you know, shared the same thing, I'm sure they have more specific.
Yes, yes.
But it's tough, there's so many committees going on down there, that our representatives are, just aren't even involved with 2,000 items going on, something like that, it's unbelievable.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I am F2, council discussion regarding liaison structure, do we name that tonight, or you want to move it on?
We'll move it to next month, and I will, I am, but I.
Number of months that we'd be moving along here, so, after the governor came out with his declaration, and, and said this is the way it is, we talked about, well, actually Jenny had put together, I don't know, did you, did you talk to the other council member and ask him at that time, or, I just don't know what the council knows or not, or?
Oh, same information, shared, yep.
Okay, so I'll have. Mike? Mike?
Nothing.
Hearing none.
We have a community center that we're not going to be using, and I'm wondering if we can re, pre-authorize Jenny to open that up for, for victims or anything, if they're looking for buildings that can be used, the community center, pre-authorize her to do that if it's needed, rather than waiting until the need comes, and then we have to publish our agenda, wait three days, and together again, feel about that, just as a what-if?
I guess my, my, you know, or there would be a call for space or something, and then react to it?
Right, yeah, right, not, not to do anything until something like that happened, but we, we could act quickly, it's a council meeting, and do the publication of notices and all that, we could just say, if, if so-and-so, that's all. You're making it too hard on us. Well, it was a great idea, I thought, everybody jump up and down and say, yay, yay, yay.
I think, you know, government isn't that.
You know something, I hate attorneys sometimes.
We need to.
I'll let you get away with it this time. I do have one question for the former city attorney, don't we have to notice that at this meeting, or how do we handle that?
Well, our, our, that deal is not completely, it's made from the, the price, so we moved it there to finalize that agreement, that seller is not super responsive, super quick to.
Okay, so the regular meeting?
Well, I, I think, you know, a full session, you've got to notice it, the, the, I think, we're pretty much purchased on the meeting.
We included the purchase agreement, the council did approve it, it was a special meeting, I mean, that, it was noticed, I didn't remember to include it as an FYI in the packet, that, it's.
Well, it has to do with. Okay, that's two for, two, two for zero.
Well, we're glad you brought both of them up, so, look, we'll smile. So these, the meeting dates that are listed, our meetings that we are hopefully going to, oh, but next council meeting is not going to happen.
Correct.
And the council meeting will be, will review that.
I have it.
Second.
Opposed, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.